All right, we're gonna open our morning workshop to click that kind of board of commissioners. We have Commissioner Anderson online and Commissioner Christopher and Commissioner Zoller in the room. We will start with a public works update. Go ahead, guys.
Okay, we have a couple of things on your consent agenda versus request for concurrence to award. Our white plastic edge line, this is a federally funded project. The holdup on that was we were, the bids came in more than what we had money for, the feds approved the increase. So now we're looking to get that one or get that one. To go, go to work. They also have item ten, which is the Golden Dale rodeo Bible camp. They hold an annual event every year. They're requesting waiver requests, they requested those every year. This year's a little different. They only requested about half to two thirds of it, we're actually, we don't have a tractor. So we said, if you guys will do all the grooming prior to and after your event. And get it set up, it would save us considerable amounts of money. So then we would waive, because it would be an additional, I think. I don't know, it's, I think it's additional thousand. Little over a thousand, we would ask that we normally don't ask for a waiver for. But they normally don't ask for. But in this instance, it saves us a ton of money because I don't have to rent a tractor an extra month. I can get one after that event and rent it for one month for the fair. And we did find one, so it took us a while, but much better price than the twelve thousand that we had been quoted.
Is it a local rental or did you go with a corporate rental?
We ended up having to go to Spokane, everybody around here, while they would do it, they can only give it up. A day here, a day there, and that is not very good for us as far as the fair goes. But we did get one for about twenty one hundred dollars as opposed to.
Wow.
Somebody turned me on when I was looking, talking to a bunch of the ranchers of Capota has a program. I did not realize, but the rest of them don't, so. So we were able to get one for one month, and so that's, that actually helps us. But again, the Golden Dale rodeo Bible camp, it's for kids, they bring kids in from all over the world. They have about ninety kids this year, so I would recommend the waiver of the fees for them. And at that, I will turn over the thing to Seth.
On construction end, we've got Courtney Road, the approaches are being paved this week and they're placing shoulder rock. They're hoping to get the paint laid down, the striping done next week, and we'll just be addressing punch list items. Rock Creek Gold Lake Bridge, we're starting to see submittals on that, they have not given us a start date yet, but they're most likely it. End up being late August, September, when they get out there. Slope flattening and our guard rail, we're having a pre-construction meeting tomorrow with a planned start for the twenty fourth. And annual traffic counts in between projects. On the design end of things, white plastic edge lines, Jeff said is on the consent agenda this afternoon. Curve warning signs and guide post, we finally got permission to go to add from Washita. So we'll get a notice contractor, see you guys next week, so we can finally get that one out after eight months of arguing back and forth with that one. Data collection project, we're still working through the Washita process to get the contract set up for our consultant. Bickleton area paving project, construction documents are being drafted for that one. Sundale Old Highway Eight, we're still waiting on depth concurrents on the archaeological report, and we will wait for that before we send out offer packets for right away. East Road cattle underpass right away offers were mailed to landowners last week.
Did you, did you guys reach out to them and work with them before that to make sure nobody's got problems?
Yeah. See preliminary work continues on other upcoming projects.
That's about it. Yeah, we always talk to the, before we bring it to you guys, but you're the only ones that have the authority to actually offer the money.
I, I figured you had already had conversations and they're on board, I just wanted to double check.
Yes. Maintenance projects, we're still working on base repair on Market Street in preparation of the overlay project Seth was talking about. West End, we're B S team for white salmon this week. Upcoming facilities, we made the cuts in the parking lot, the asphalt staying in place or in the road to remove later on this month. HVAC units, we're wrapping two more of the units this Saturday, so we don't interfere with the offices. And then we'll have one more unit to go, which is in a conference room, that one we will do during the week, we'll just close the conference room. Let's see Pioneer Center is the same, jail roof is the same, Superior Court same. Dispatch basement upgrades are complete, there is a new project coming, meeting with Heather next week to discuss. She has a granting for a permanent. County location, we have some ideas, I want to confirm with her before we bring it to the board to get your take on it. So we'll discuss that next week. Fairgrounds, or maybe the week after, fairgrounds events. We, none of them at the fairgrounds, we have a couple of events coming up on the courthouse lawn. Golden Dale Pride event is next week, and then we have the back to school bash on August fifth. It is sponsored by the Nazarene Church, they will be asking for a waiver, the twenty five dollar waiver, because everything they do is they give it, they give stuff. They're not collecting any money or anything. Annex four, everything is, the painting's done, floor covering actually got pushed off another week because one of the contractors employees got hurt. So he's out this week, so we can't, they can't do it till next week. Fuel Islands, the same place, sadist pass, towers assembled, foundation excavation is complete. Now they gotta start pouring the foundation. Other issues and follow, or some follow up stuff. Maintenance tech, we, we lost one of our maintenance techs from facilities. We would like to hire one back, we are down on people. Thank you. Dallasport Water District, I was going to, I've, the, the board probably saw the letter. Again, I want to stay out of this as much as I can, but. The comment that P U D raised the rates and is proposing massive rate raise. I don't know where that's coming from, I was gonna actually reach out to Ann and Teresa if that's okay. And ask them where that's coming from, because the county raised the rates, it wasn't P U D. Make it, it sound like we don't oversee them at all, they can do whatever they want, that's really not the case. So if that's okay, I would do that.
Yes, please, are we? In the past, the P U D budget for that has just kind of been, here's our revenues and this is our expense, and there's no itemized breakdown. And I've always said I have a problem with that, are we gonna make sure that this year it gets here in time for us to actually look at it?
The problem is that I can't do anything about, well, I guess we could renegotiate that, I don't want to touch that subject right now. But to answer your, when they updated the agreement, they made, P U D has to turn in their budget to us by October fifteenth. So.
Right, I just, on October fifteenth, I want to.
Yes, we, we will, no, no, we, we met with them, yes, our last this week to talk about a couple.
And then in the document I have, it, it has. Their budget up to, I want to say twenty fifteen, but I don't have a spreadsheet of that budget after twenty fifteen, can you give me a?
We'll get.
So I can see what it's done over the course of time?
We will do that. Now that's gonna be something we're gonna spend a lot more time working on here in the next couple of, a few things off the plate.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot there. That needs to be dialed in, that's for sure.
Some other updates, we, I met with Jeff King, and again, we're looking for your opinion on this. We talked to him because we, you know, you'd asked, and sometimes we don't get to it right away, but we are, we talked to him about taking over some of his long term. Not as, you know, as maintenance contracts, but fixing things like the fence and all that. So my recommendation to him is, let's put together the stuff that you need to get done. It's not all gonna happen in a year, because that's not how this works. And then we would put, I said, I would talk to the board, and then my suggestion is we put it on the capital and non-capitalist under a different line item. You know, how we have all the different facilities, we just put it under tower sites. And then, you know, we'd either, you know, then the board would determine if we need more money. Also, we could schedule it for, you know, six years out, if you're okay.
No, that's the smart way to go, I think, anyway.
Then we're not, we know it's there and we can plan.
We're not last minute on everything.
Right, and then we can decide what's more, and I told them, then you decide what's more important, you know, noise need this, you do this instead. So that's how, that's how we operate, and that's how he said he'd be okay with, so we worked with him on that. Dallasport Clarifier, we're starting to put together the budget. What, I mean, you know, we can put it on, we could not put it on, I guess.
That's hard part for me, so we have the two fifty for half of it.
Yes.
And we're going to be asking for the two fifty for the other part of it. But whether we get the two fifty to be able to fully fund the project or not, we don't know.
I can leave it off until we meet with the board, it's up to, again, it's, I'm looking for.
That, that would be, that would be my recommendation, is let's see what money we have before we put it in a budget to spend said money.
How soon will we know on that?
Yeah. Once, my understanding and, and staff can correct me if I'm wrong, is once we submit to ask for the landfill gas, gas funds. Then this board chair and the P U D board chair will meet, schedule a meeting, have a discussion, come to a agreement. I can't imagine that being a long drawn out procedure. So with that, you know, we'll either have a yes or a no. Rather quickly, and then if, if it's a yes, then we can throw it back in the budget is the way I kind of look at it. W J, I see your hand up, but we're not taking public comment right now. Yeah, so that's the way I would. Recommend it.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Okay, I'm, just wanted to bring you, we did some, we're starting to do some work on the buses.
Buses.
For seniors.
Oh.
So we did our first one, replaced radiator overflow tank and things like that. So we've been working, Seth's been working with Sharon, so we have moved that forward, and I think it's working out really well.
Okay, good.
We brought it in, they stopped it, they, the guy swung by when he was fueling it up, our guys looked at it. He took it, you know, they make sure it's fine, it's losing a little water, they ordered the part, called him when it came back, brought it back by, put the part in, we're done. Instead of going to Vancouver, so I think.
Well, and that's the kicker, it, it, it's gonna save our taxpayers money in the long run, which is why we're sitting here, so. Thank you for doing all that.
Okay, and we got one other thing that's come up, and I guess we're again looking for what the board thinks on this. In the past, we've opened the fairgrounds to allow people to bring animals in only on real big fires. The monastery fire when Public Works was emergency management, we opened it up, but if you remember the monastery fire, it was huge, and a lot of people got displaced. In the past, we have not used the fairground as the first option for people that get evacuated. Because a lot of them, it's a temporary thing and they don't go very far. And a lot of them don't bring their animals. Once we open up the fairgrounds for evacuees, then I have to have somebody up there on overtime the whole time they're there. Because we, and we have to make sure they go in the right places, especially if we have events. Because they can't intermingle with the events. And we did it once years ago, we canceled an event because they thought the fairgrounds is gonna be needed. Turned out, nobody came, and the people that had the event were extremely upset.
Why, why would you have to cancel an event?
Because we were told a bunch of people were coming. And that they needed all the barns, and it was a horse event. And so we told the people, you can't be there if we have to use it. So what we've done after that, we decided not to use it as a first option. Only if it became a real, you know, a real threat where it was a real, a real fire, not. You know, soon as there's a fire breakout, then they put a lot of people on level twos and threes, which I understand that. But they're, you know, like the fire, the Knight Road Fire. Most of those people didn't, didn't end up leaving, it was come and gone. But we ended up firing up the fairgrounds, and so we paid, you know, a bunch of overtime for that. On a budget that's pretty tight. Yeah, and I can do that if you're, you're okay with that, that's fine, I don't care either way. Like on the monastery fire, we got all, we got reimbursed for that, if it's a big fire, you know, we get FEMA money, and so we got reimbursed for that. Again, I'm not saying, I'm not saying let's kick the people out. But it would be nice if they could find a different option, and then if not, then we use it, but don't throw out, go to the fairgrounds right out of the gate.
In the past, what has Red Cross used? Do you know?
Red Cross, it just depends, they've used the school.
Okay.
The monastery fire, they actually used the fairgrounds.
Okay.
But a lot of fires, you know, they're really quick and they're over, and we don't, they, the Red Cross doesn't set up at all. On a bigger fire, again, I understand. But the only reason I'm bringing this to it, because you know, if we get a fire. And all of a sudden, we're in the, you know, the process of the fair, we need to be able to tell them something.
Well, and, and I, I appreciate that, because we need a plan. That is, here's our first place, here's our second place, here's our third place. I don't like the idea if there's a horse event, we're kicking an event out. They've already pre-booked, they've planned, they've had their own thing, so I don't like that, but we as a county have to. Have a place for people to go, and I understand the, you call it the Knight Road Fire, I'll call it the Sikes Creek Fire. Turned out to be not that big of a deal, but if that would have hopped the road and stayed in the timber. You know, four hundred houses.
Right.
So it had the potential, and all those people up there that are, feel like they need to flee for their life, I'm not gonna tell them, sorry, the county has no place for you. So with that, no, I'm good with the fairgrounds. But we need to, if there's an, a different site than the fairgrounds, it needs to be presented to me, and we need to come up with a plan that here's our first place, here's our second place, here's our third place. And if we can't come up with a second and third, or until then, my option would still be the fairgrounds, because I'm not gonna tell the taxpayers they can't haul their animals up.
No, that wasn't what I was.
Right.
Well, and we probably need to talk to Jeff King.
I see a Jeff King hand raised, go ahead, Mr. Jeff.
Yes. We need to distinguish between sheltering of animals and of people.
Right, I, I think.
The fairgrounds is not the first choice. And since lessons learned in past fires, not any choice for sheltering of people.
Right.
And once we. Issue level two and or three evacuation notifications, sheriff's office decision. My department sends out those messages, we have a responsibility to provide a place for the people to go.
Right, what, what I think we need to do is we need to brainstorm this, we need to all be in the same room, put it on the agenda for one of the coming weeks for an hour. Let's get some brainstorming going, because this is something that we, we need a policy in place. With all of the, you know, and make sure we invite Jeff and, and, and anybody you think needs to be there, and anybody Jeff thinks needs to be there and. And come up with a plan, because, yeah.
Because in the past, a lot of the people, and Jeff's made a good point, you know, Jeff and I talked through this yesterday too. In the past, if it's local people that have been here a long time, they're not gonna take their house to the fairgrounds. They're gonna take it over to one of their friends or somebody they know or their relatives. The people that have just moved here may not have that.
Right.
Resource that we would need to assist in. Because in the past, you know, usually they look to other ranches and places like that to take animals. As opposed to the fair, just because for the fairgrounds, again, I'm, I'm okay with it, we did it, you know. We did it ourselves during the monastery fire, and when we were doing emergency management, we brought them to the fairgrounds. We have, and I'm not saying don't do it on a big term thing, I just want to make it the board aware. You know, there's a, there's a cost, and it's a substantial cost. Because ultimately, and Jeff's right, we don't want to house people at the fairgrounds, but we have to make sure they don't leave their animals and just walk away. Because now you gotta get, somebody has to provide food for them. And if it's not a big, if it's not a big fire, guess who's providing food? I'm hoping that.
Yeah, I would imagine all the people that have been here a long time have a friend or a colleague or somebody they can drop theirs off on. There's plenty of people like me out there that will open up the properties. But not everybody has that, and when they're first fleeing, they need somewhere to go. So yes, we need, we need to figure it out, we need a plan, and why we don't already have one is scary. But. I would say ASAP pronto on the agenda, just so we're not kicking this can down the road until, it's, it's gonna be a fire year.
Yes.
So, okay.
Bringing it to everybody's attention.
I do have a question, since we're on fire, the fire that occurred out by me on Horseshoe Bend, I noticed that like during the fire, the road got gravelled. That's weird. Any idea, I mean, literally from fire end to fire end, gravel got put on the asphalt.
I can answer that question.
Things up for motorcycle safety and what, what was the purpose of that?
Well, what happened was, is with all the traffic, and it was real hot, the road starts bleeding.
Right.
And to prevent the oil from going away, we sanded.
Got it, okay.
So that's what we did.
That makes sense, I was wondering if it was the heavy truck traffic.
It was, it's, it's, they draw the oil out when it's hot, and so we sanded to protect.
So you sand it to protect it and then go out afterwards and brush all the sand off? Yeah, okay, interesting, that's a good answer.
Yes, that request was made by the sheriff's office and fire command in, in unified command.
Right, I just hadn't seen that before, so I figured it was to protect the road in some way, whether it's from hot tires or, or whatever else. The only other question I had is, we had discussion last week. On whether we were gonna have discussions on the Dallasport wastewater. Contract, we were gonna have those discussions on a Tuesday or a Thursday. Commissioner Anderson wanted him on a Thursday, and he's online if he wants to speak about that, and I said I needed a week to look over the contract to decide what I wanted to do. It's my recommendation that we hold those on a Tuesday. Which might seem weird, but I want to make sure we are in full transparency of the public. So that's, that's my recommendation, and I will open it up for my seatmates for their opinions on the matter before we schedule that.
I'm fine holding it on a Tuesday if you want, you're the chair.
Any other questions of staff, Mr. Anderson?
No, I'm just in favor of getting on the workshop agenda for the discussion regarding where we're gonna take animals. You know, as soon as a fire pops, you see everybody up posting on Facebook, oh, we've got open spots. So I, I understand where Jeff's going, but that might not occur to everyone, so it would be nice to have a plan in place.
Anything, Commissioner Zoller?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Get it on the agenda as soon as possible.
Yeah. How many people did we have show up when they opened it up, are there any idea, how many animals or?
Yeah, we did have some animals, I think we had two sets of people. That's what I'd heard. And they didn't stay.
Right, and that's, it's a transitional norm, they're gonna transition, because they don't want to stay there either, so. They're gonna transition until they find somebody else on Facebook that has some land available and a room they can stay in, and then they're gonna move out.
Right, right, it's just, I wanted to make sure, because there was, there was a little bit of confusion that led to it. All of a sudden, somebody, the word got down to, there was a four H event there that we needed to cancel their event to let everybody in. And we're like, I'm like, well, no, let's back the canceling of the event up.
Yeah.
We have, we have a bigger facility than that, you know, they can go up by force barn C and D. Because the four H was using A and B at that time, I mean, we could work around it, we do.
Well, there's, there's livestock pens, they can be all stuck in the arena, we, we got, there's, there's options without canceling people that have already booked an event.
Yes, there, there's still options. The only, again, I would like to get it worked out, and Jeff and I talked again about this. The big thing for me is the Christian Cowboy event that's coming up, if there was a fire to bust during that, you either, because it's ninety kids. They do not, they do not allow people in amongst the kids. So now you're stuck with the option of telling people not to go to the fairgrounds or canceling their event.
And that's why we need a plan, so we have an option A and an option B. And hopefully an option C, so that depending on the circumstances, we are prepared. Where we're not now.
Yeah, and in that instance, I could probably still do something if we had to, we could corridor off the thing. But again, it just, you know, let you guys know, there is a cost to that.
When you had that bigger fire, how many people did?
We had a lot. Oh, I'm gonna say.
Ten different families.
Oh, no, it's probably twenty or thirty.
Yeah, I was gonna say that was a big, all the way on the right side of ninety seven, and that burned a lot of ground in there.
Yeah, we also had D N R up there and Red Cross, it was kind of a unique thing. They typically don't co-locate like that, but it was a big event.
Okay, and, and the lessons learned from that was that we will never do that again, cannot co-locate, command, fire camp, and the sheltering of citizens.
And that's why I want to make sure we put it on the agenda for an hour or something, so we can all come. Give our experience and our expertise, because I don't want to make a policy that is a bad policy, and I need your guys' guidance and expertise on this, so. Without just telling people, no, we're not taking you, we gotta come up with a, we gotta come up with options. We are running over time, so unless there's anything else pertinent for these fine gentlemen.
I got one more thing, real quick.
This is from Public Works. I won't be able to attend that, so I, the other day, so today, but yeah, it's been.
Hopefully it's not a bag full of asphalt. For those of you online that don't know, Lee is retiring, and her last day is today, so Public Works was not on the mic right there, but they were just saying thank you to her for all her hard work. W J, I see your hand up again, sir, we don't take public comment outside of public comment, I'm sorry, sir, you'll have to wait till public comment or reach out to me personally, and I'll answer any questions you have. Moving on, do we have Rob today at all? Oh, he stepped out. Okay, for Commissioner Anderson. I do want to have a short executive session. Rob has a meeting, I believe, at eleven o'clock, so I needed to squeeze that executive session in before he goes to his meeting. So I was thinking we can either do I T, and then we can do the executive session. And squeeze those in both before eleven o'clock, or we can flip them around and do the executive first and then do I T. Your call, this one ran a little long, how long do you think?
Jake.
Any issue doing I T real quick?
Hey, let's do I T real quick. Sounds like it'll be a quick.
Yes.
Yes, I hope so. Okay. So a few weeks ago, we talked about the, the, the contract with Wright Systems. Commissioner Anderson had some questions about that, so we sent the question to the, to the vendor. And the questions have been answered, the questions have, and the questions unanswered have been sent to all three of the board members. And this is supposed to be discussion about those. About that information, and what more do you want to know?
I, I don't have anything.
I'd like to hear from Jake about the answers you received, Jake.
Yeah, it looked like the vendor was willing to change the proposal a little bit and the requirements of what they needed, so it'll save us some money. Because then we'll just, rather than having insurance on old equipment, we can now have just an old one on stock. So if anything goes wrong, we can just hot swap it, and then I got, I spoke with Randy this morning. And then I got, I spoke with, um, Randy this morning and it looks like my questions. Um, they made a change in the document with regards to, uh, the failover and, but they only put it on for the, um, the ASA going to a fire. And Randy assured me that they will be doing that, uh, during the onboarding with our main, uh, firewalls as well, so. With that assurance, I'm fine moving forward and I'd like to thank Randy for all the time he spent, uh, working on this project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, the only question I have is for you, do you feel comfortable with where this contract is?
Yes. Yes, very comfortable, uh, like I said in the email that I sent last week, um, we have outs. You know, if things go really south, we have outs, I don't expect things, as a matter of fact, I, I expect a lot of good things from this contract. Um, but if, if I'm completely wrong, we have a way to escape. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And it will be on next Tuesday's, uh, consent agenda. Okay?
Good enough, thank you for your hard work, sir.
Yep.
Ah. With that, we, if we go into executive now, we need to figure out how we're gonna do it with you on the phone, I guess we can have Lee call your number with the office phone. And just.
Just.
Speaker. Um, do we want to shut the Zoom? Sorry, got a heads up over here. Sure, I thought you were gonna be in that one too, but go ahead. Yes. Well, I, ten minutes is all I'm gonna do.
Yeah.
Two seconds. So the Public Health Department filled their environmental tech position with an internal applicant. And now that has opened the clerical three position down in White Salmon, so I'm just looking for a verbal to be able to post for that position.
I mean, yes.
Yep.
Ms. Anderson, you okay with that? Three, three, three.
Thank you.
Um, see, I, I only plan this to be ten minutes, we should whip right through it. Um. Are we shutting the Zoom off or just closing mics, it's to shut it off for safety? And I'm sorry, I'm, I'll do it quick, it'd be ten minutes and we'll come back and do the F sec thing, which is what I'm assuming you're here for. Um, I just have to get the executive in before our H R person leaves. Uh, yep. Uh, so we're going to go into executive session in accordance with R C W forty-two dot three zero dot one one zero print one print G to review the performance. Discipline and qualifications of a public employee. Uh, we are going to go in, in for ten minutes. So that would be, we will be coming back at ten, sir, ten forty-two, actually be ten forty-three. By the time you get out of the room.